All set? Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements. This has to do with the schedule for the town council meetings. The next town council budget meeting is on Monday, January 11th, at 6:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Thursday, January 14th, at 7:00 PM, also here in the Matthew Thornton Room, is a regular council meeting. Thursday, January 21st, at 6:00 PM, here in the Thornton Room, budget meeting. There's another budget meeting on Monday, January 25th, at 6:00 PM. And on Thursday, January 28th, at 7:00 PM, in the Matthew Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. I'd just like to make a little short announcement as well to thank Senator Ayon for her attendance at the General Area Adult Center this morning to present the American flag that had been flown over the Capitol. We appreciate her coming to town. She's a very busy schedule and we appreciate her time. Okay, we only have one item on this special meeting. We have been recently told, we all know now, that the primary is scheduled for February 9th. Am I correct on that date? February 9th. And as a result, there was discussion about where it's going to be held. And previously, it was at the Mastrocola, James Mastrocola Elementary. But as we can all imagine, upper elementary. And as we can all imagine, it's going to be a very busy primary and the decision needs to be made and wants to be made to move it to the high school. We need to be able to officially approve that change in sight. So that's why we are having this special meeting. And it has to be done. We couldn't wait until the regular meeting next week because of the time allowance. It has to be set before that time. That's why the special meeting is occurring. So, the town council needs to consider relocating the election that is being held on Tuesday, February 9th, from the main Mastrocola, James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School to the Merrimack High School. First of all, is there any questions? Yes, Bill?
Just a point of order. Looking at the agenda, I know that the agenda is different from a normal town council agenda. And generally, we allow public comments at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. I'm always seeing on the agenda that's at the end of the meeting. Was that by design for...
No. Because what's going to happen, as soon as we're done with this topic,
Right.
we're adjourned the meeting.
Okay.
Because the budget is a work session, not a meeting. But I think your comment is very accurate. So, it may be appropriate... It's a matter of you have this look.
Special meetings, we typically don't follow those words.
Related to comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman, your other chair call.
Well, what I'm saying is it may be appropriate before we take the vote to be able to open it up if there are any comments.
Correct.
So I think your point's well taken. Are there any comments from the public related to this topic? Yes, Chris?
Thank you. Chris Christensen, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee. I had planned to comment on the budget portion of it. If you're only going to have it at this point, I'll do it. Otherwise, it's not related to the existing issue.
No. This is just for this particular topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Seeing none, I'll be open to a motion? Or just, I don't see there's any discussion?
Move to designate the primary polling, the primary election polling place as the Mastrocola Elementary School.
No.
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 I'm sorry. Merrimack High School. Pardon me.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan. We had a little hat attack for a minute. Seconded by Bill Boyd. Any discussion?
Yes, Tom. Tom, in the...
I haven't heard anything about the school board's position or any of that kind of stuff. They fussed at us in the past about things and said, "We can't do things," and all that kind of stuff.
There's a motion on the floor. It's time for discussion.
That's what I'm discussing. I'm asking, can somebody give us some opinion from the school board?
Well, since we have Lynn Christensen here, she probably would be able to go right ahead, Chris.
When we originally talked about single polling places, and we talked about it with the school board, the initial discussion was that we would have the November elections at the high school and all the rest of them would be at the upper elementary. The presidential primary was kind of always left up in the air. It was kind of by default that it would be at the upper elementary. Earlier on this year, I had a discussion with Marge Chaffrey. She said, based on the no incumbent, which is always a higher election, and the number of candidates running, I'm expecting we're going to have it. And I said, "Yeah, we're probably going to have a bigger turnout." She said, "Do you think you're going to need the high school?" I said, "Possibly." So she made arrangements for, and this was when the calendar was originally being set. So she made arrangements for the school board to arrange for not only the possibility of using the high school, but also that there would be no school on that day regardless of which school we used, which was just a wonderful thing for the school board to do. That was very cooperative of their part and I'm very appreciative of what they did. A few weeks ago, I had a discussion with Marge and she said, "Do you think you're going to need it?" And I said, "Yeah, we might." But based on what we had done on having only November elections at the high school, the posting was done for it to be at the upper elementary. We've since had a discussion with Marge as well as Chief Doyle. And what we expect for turnout is going to be high. We can manage, but you're going to have traffic issues. Inside is not going to be too bad because you're going to have people coming in. Yeah, they have to wait in line like they normally do, but once they get the ballot, they get one ballot, they get one check, and they're out of there. So you're not going to have a lot of parking issues, but still, you're going to have traffic issues with a lot of people coming in. So we went back to the school and said, "If we, if we still need it and if the town council decides they want to move it, can we move it to the high school?" And they said, "Absolutely, yes, you can." Now, that's going to entail reposting all of the postings that have been done to say, "We're going to be at J-Muse." It's going to be putting Highway on notice, that the school isn't going to be doing the setup, that Highway has to do the setup. So we've got some logistics that are, that are around there. But, but I think, based on the number of people that I'm expecting, typically, on a presidential election, you, we have 14,000 to 16,000 voters, and we have it at the high school. On a town meeting election, we have 3,000 to 6,000 voters. On a presidential primary, we have anywhere from 7,000 to 12,000 voters, depending upon whether there's an incumbent. Four years, eight years ago, when there was not an incumbent, we had almost 12,000 voters. I think you're going to be at that level. Four years ago, we had 8,000 voters, which is still a lot of people. It's still certainly more than what you have at, at a town meeting. So I think you're going to have a lot of people having it at the high school. You have the traffic flow, you have two long streets going into the high school, which helps, which you do not have at J-Muse. The one thing that we are going to have to do, and Highway's going to have to help us, is, once we move to the high school, we plan for handicap parking. It's well designed, but it is not well marked, and we have to do a better job of doing that. Because for handicap parking, what they do is they come out in O'Gara, they come up to the blockade, which is preventing you from going around the circle. They come into that right-hand parking space, they go all the way down to the end, they park, and they walk across to the back door. And I'm, and I'm doing this for the purpose of the, the audience, so that anybody handicapped will understand what you do. You do not have to park, walk all the way down that corridor, walk all, you just park at the end, walk across the access road, you go in the back door, you sit down at the table, and we got the ballot for you. So we have to do a better job of marking that. But as far as traffic flow, as far as traffic control, you're going to be much better at the high school. So I would encourage you to move this to the high school.
Now, the school committee concurs with this?
Yes.
Okay.
I talked to Marge yesterday. She said, "If you want the high school, you have it." So there's no question.
They discussed it at their meeting this past week.
Okay.
And they do have it built in the calendar, because if you do have an election at the high school, you have to close school. You can't have school.
Well, they're closing school regardless.
And they had already, they had already decided that anyway.
They're closing school regardless. But I'm suggesting, and if we had this at J-Muse, you'd still have to close school because you wouldn't be able to deal with it otherwise. So school is closed, there's no question about that. That was determined when they were doing the calendar.
But they had a date built into the calendar in anticipation of this date. It wasn't set as February 9th until we found out what the date of the primary was.
It was a floating date, and it wasn't determined which school it was going to be at, but school was going to be closed for that date because regardless of which school we were at, you couldn't have school. It just didn't work. So that's, that's not an issue. Yeah, school is on board with this, so it's just a matter of you guys determining, based on the charter, that this is where you want to hold the election.
Mark, did you want to say something?
Just a couple of quick comments. Moderator Christensen's right on the money when it comes to the, the planning and the, the expectations in terms of the number of folks that are going to turn out. We're looking at that many folks. We've got to take into account the amount of parking that's available and the ingress, the egress, and especially if we're talking about bad weather and we don't know, we don't have a magic ball and we can't look ahead. However, if we do, the ability to have a, a large number of folks queue up in the high school and not in the parking lot in the bad weather, which the potential certainly exists, allows for a happier electorate, I think, as opposed to those who would be otherwise really irritated about standing in the snow or ice or otherwise.
They're still going to be standing in line and not happy, but we can't do anything about that.
Right. Yeah. However, Moderator Christensen brought up a couple of good points. I mean, we're talking about almost 600 parking spots at the high school collectively and only a few hundred here. When I say here, I'm talking not only at J-Muse, but right here at the, at the Town Hall complex. The ability to relegate one particular section of that school for easy access for folks who are handicapped is super easy to do. It's just a matter of, like, the takeaway we had several years ago with the presidential election was there are...
Signage.
The signage and making sure that folks knew exactly where to go. So I'm sure that's, that's a challenge that's fairly easily overcome with an appropriate signage and communication.
And DPW's is on notice that, they know we need this. They weren't expecting it this month, but I'm sure they will step up to the plate and do it. They've always done whatever we needed them to do, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and from the school district's perspective, Marge has been right on top of this. She spoke with me and had, had conversations with Lynn about having no problem making the move. They've already earmarked that date off of the calendar months ago when they put their school calendar together for this purpose, knowing that it was coming, and let us know. The only challenge that exists is making sure that the high school basketball game that was scheduled for that night is moved, which isn't a problem. I've already had conversation with the school resource officer and the activities directors on notice that if it has to happen, they can make a phone call and make that work. All in all, the, the perfect scenario would be to have the high school relegated as the polling location for this particular event. The venue was perfect for it, the accommodations are perfect for it, the logistics are perfect for putting the plan together for it, and we've got plenty of time to do that.
Tom, does that answer what you need?
Absolutely. You had me at, at go. When you told me that they'd already planned in to allow that, to take...
Take the day off. I'm okay with that.
It was planned B, so that was always there.
I understand why. I believe it's the right thing to do, and I just...
I think the other elections can easily be accommodated. On the September primaries, you get 3,000 to 4,000 to 5,000 people. Town election, you get 3,000 to 6,000. You can handle those at J-Muse. But the presidential election with the 12,000 to 17,000 people and the primary, which, I'm going to say, if you, if you have an incumbent, maybe you could do it at J-Muse. It would be tight, but, but when you don't, I mean, if you have to do it, we'd do it and we'd make the best of it, but it's not the best idea.
I'm good.
Jody, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say that I watched the school board meeting and heard the discussion and so on. If school is going to be closed anyway, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't support having it at the high school.
And I'll tell you, the parents are very happy to have school closed on any election day. They, I know there's a lot of parents that are, are concerned with having school open on any election day. I mean, we, we make sure on the smaller elections that we have security there, that the school is secure, that that's not an issue. But I know the parents are happy to not have school on that day.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those, any questions about the motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? None. 7-0-0.
Can I make a request?
Absolutely.
As long as we're being taped or live. We're expecting a huge turnout. I'm planning on 16 checklists, which means the parties who are normally responsible for providing checklist people do not have the number of people that they need to provide people to man those checklists. So if there are people in the viewing audience, or if you know of people who are interested in helping at the elections, please get ahold of either Diane or I. Diane at, at the Town Hall or myself. We can use some extra people and we will gladly have people, I love to have people on, on call that we can supplement what's normally there. So please, give us a call.
I'm glad you took advantage of the time. Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much, Lynn and Mark. I think we're all set. We voted in, so talk with DPW.
Thank you.
See you at the high school on the 9th.
Absolutely.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Seconded.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, 7-0-0. Now, we're going to move on to the work session for the budget. And everyone has the order to which, oh, Paul?
For our minute taker, just give a time when we're closing and opening, please, for our minute taker.
Okay. Well, let's say we close the meeting at 6:23, the special meeting. We're going to open this work session at 6:24. Chris, if you want to make a comment now, or do you want to do it during Parks and Rec? It's your pleasure, whatever.
I'll...
Okay. So comments section.
Make public comments.
So you don't have to hang around to the very end. Unless you want to.
I can watch some at home and then just yell at the TV set instead of at you guys.
Understood.
I'm Chris Christensen, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. So I'm only referring to that portion of the budget. The Parks and Recreation Committee did review the budget at our November meeting. We did not meet in December. And generally speaking, although there's always a few questions, we were very pleased with the budget that was submitted. We know there's been some changes since then. Couple of things we've been looking at, we were very pleased to see in the original budget, a part-time, year-round maintenance person that would be doing some other things as well. Apparently, that's been removed and we're a little disappointed at that, but we understand that budgets are budgets and need to be adjusted as you move through. If somebody came up with a couple thousand dollars extra for that job, we'd love to see it. And we know that in a couple of years, there's some more stuff in the CIP, so we didn't try to pad in a lot of stuff that needs to go there. But we noticed that some of the CP, excuse me, CIP items are based on some pricing goals that were in effect many years ago. For example, the cost to build a field is probably twice what it was 10 years ago when we used to think it was $150,000. So for future planning, if, if that's a consideration, we'd like to have you throw that in the back of your mind. Other than that, we thank you very much. We're pleased to see that there's, there's good support from the town council and town management for the Parks and Rec Department activities.
Thank you very much, Chris. Paul? Want to just jump in? Okay, let's start with welfare. Pat Murphy, come on down. And that is number 25.
Can I start?
Absolutely.
With each of the departments, you will see the, an increase in, with the 53rd week of payroll. So as far as Pat's budget, that's pretty much all there is there that's different from the year before.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yes.
Mike on?
There you go. Yeah. So this evening, the budget that I'm presenting really is not different, a whole lot of different from last year, so I'm not going to really go through it. And instead, I just, if anybody has any questions, you know, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Jody?
I can go into it more, but pretty much the, I think the, the health and social service budget is exactly the same. I was able to par it down from the requests that we got, from, it was about 92,000 down to 74, and then keep it at level funding. And then, pretty much, the welfare budget, I'm taking a very optimistic approach, and I just shifted around some of the expenses that I've seen that's being adjusted, but that's about it. So other than that, it really is a very similar budget than it was last year.
Jody?
Thank you. And everyone will have to bear with me, even though I've done years and years of budgets without having a revenue side of the budget, that just changes things dramatically. School district doesn't have revenue or other things to deal with, and they don't have the, the capital reserve funds either. So if I ask something that's really obvious to those of you who have done this a while, please bear with me. So I'm trying to get, get the handle on that side of it. My question regarding your budget is, when money is requested, I, because I saw there was a few different line items, and one was a substantial amount for different programs. When money's requested, and I see that your, the proposed budget is, goes back to level funding from what has been basically the last couple of years. But I'm interested in knowing what it was specifically about those particular programs with the increase that was requested but not granted. That was there something that you were looking to either increase? Have we not been able to fill a need in this past year so that you felt that we might need some more money? What, what prompted the request and the increase that wasn't granted for those particular programs?
Well, most, my approach actually, and when I look at the, the budget, especially for health and social services, is really trying to be really kind of conservative and not increasing it unless I really see a great need. So one of my objectives is I look at a program, does it, what kind of need does it fill? Is it a primary, which would be for basic needs, secondary levels, more on other things that are not as quite basic, and then the third is more educational or counseling type level? So I have to look at those kind of things in making the decisions. So last year, I did increase some of the, and I did shift around some and increase some, so this year, I didn't really feel there was a great need to do that.
So there isn't one particular program that we're turning a lot of people away or that we could, that people aren't getting the services that they, they need because we're not giving them an increase this year?
The one great advantage I have is I do use a lot of these programs, so if I got that impression or feeling that we were turning away people, that would definitely be on my radar to actually...
And you'd bring it to our attention.
Absolutely.
And just want to mention that the requests are actually from the organization themselves. They're not Pat requesting the money. That's request, Pat, Pat gets all the requests in from all these organizations that we help fund. And she vets them based on what she sees coming through her office.
Okay. See, I did not know that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that makes a big difference.
That's, that's why.
Yeah, all this, all this right here is all the proposals.
So this isn't something that you requested and town management said, "No, we can't do that this year." It's, I, okay, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, and, and basically, I do ask for some criteria, and when they're making their proposal, what money they're requesting, why they want to use it, you know. And then I ask them, you know, I'm looking for statistics on terms of how many people are served through Merrimack, how many are underserved, and things like that. So these are all things that I'm looking at. Plus, I'm looking at their budgets. We get audit reports. We look to see, you know, that money is being used wisely.
That helps a lot. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm good. She covered what I was going to say, is that, you know, they, they do keep track of where their clients come from and how much, you know, service we receive. And, you know, and the, and the calculus you have to go through to, to decide whether, you know, what you're going to provide or not provide, or whether the request is justified or reasonable or, or whatever. So, you know, it's, yeah, if you had all those, we used to get all the, they used to give us all those requests, so you could go through it and see what they looked like, okay, and what they were looking for, and then try to puzzle out how this fit in with their budget. Sometimes, they send us something that would be a, a per capita by population. And then Matt, you know, somehow worked that off of some client services they may have provided, and then they come up with a number that they provide to everybody based on that algorithm that they use. So that's some of the way that they work those kinds of things.
But as, as long as we're not missing a need by a large quantity, that's, that was my main concern. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Bill?
Just very quickly, Pat, can you communicate to me the uptick in the request for funding from Greater Nashua, Alba Homes and St. Joseph's? Are they seeing an increase of need at their particular facilities and therefore, that's the need emanating out of Merrimack and therefore asking for an increased subsidy to accommodate that particular need?
I haven't seen the need coming from Merrimack, per se, but there's definitely a great need. I, I actually am a member of the Greater Nashua Continuum of Care, which is a group of organizations that we look at homelessness and the needs and all the services and things like that. So I'm very aware and very up on what's in the area. And, and normally, anybody that would be homeless, a lot of times, are coming through me. So I do have an awareness what's coming from Merrimack. Of course, you know, we can always use just greater funding in the homeless services. It is one of those things that's the hardest thing in my job, is to deal with someone who is homeless, because it takes a lot of my energy and time to try to, to find placement and work with them. It is the hardest thing to do. So, you know, if we had all the funding in world, yes, I'd love to increase all these and give them all the funds that they requested. I guess, at the same time, too, I have to really realize that I'm trying to weigh both sides, the budget and the requests, and what is the most needed in, in trying to meet those needs. So it is a, it's a delicate balance.
Yes, Eileen?
Just FYI, I have, I did not instruct Pat to reduce the budget, so it's, she, she has done this on her own. And, you know, it, different people have different philosophies, but really, the tax burden on Merrimack should be as a result of the individual, the services that are provided to Merrimack. And I'm sure other communities would like us to contribute more, but we really, it's, it's not fair to our taxpayers to subsidize other communities.
Yes? Dan?
Just a quick comment, because like Lynn said, people are watching at home on, on budget time. But thank you, Pat, for all the work that you do, too. It's very appreciated. But I just feel very fortunate that we live in Merrimack. Our budget's, for the people at home, some real sharp budget numbers. Our budget's $27 million. We have two of our biggest departments, Fire and Police, that are well over $10 million combined, and our welfare budget is $155,000. So just putting numbers in perspective, what a fortunate community. Out of about 27,000 people in town, our welfare department has a budget of under $200,000. And again, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
All set? All set? Say none. Okay. Thanks, Pat. Did you have additional? I'm sorry.
No, just a, just a little comment off of Dan, just to kind of, to bring to the council's attention. Pat was just named the Volunteer of the Month with the Girl Scouts of America. Her daughter is a Gold Award winner, which is the Girl Scouts equivalent of the Boy Scouts Eagle Scouts. So, I figured since she was here and in public, I could actually publicly commend her for the work that she does with the Girl Scouts. So, thank you so much, and congratulations.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice picture, too. You and your daughter? Was a nice picture. That you were in the patch and... Parks and Recreation, Matt Kasperius. That would be number thirteen. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, everybody. It's, uh, hard to believe it's January already and time for, for this stuff already. We've actually already started hiring for summer, so it comes quickly. But it's been a busy year for the Parks and Recreation...
At least you have a good reason to think of summer.
Yeah, hold that thought.
Working on it. Busy year for the Parks and Recreation Department. We've been kind of steadily increasing programs, trying to do a lot of kind of free programs and those types of things, just where we have been kind of limited on what we have with our budget. So, but we've been still able to find a lot of kind of free opportunities or outside groups to provide opportunities on our behalf, you know, that kind of thing, so that we are able to provide more for the residents. Our day camp in particular saw about a ten percent increase in registration numbers, where it had been on a steady decline for three or four years. Our bus trips as well have been, and then our summer concert series, and then all of our special events have all seen kind of increases in participation and enrollments. So, we've been happy to see that. This past year, obviously, you guys had, had provided us with funding to do kind of that first phase of Wasserman Park improvements, where, you know, we started with the part, the new waterfront parking lot that opened up in June of last year, which has been a tremendous success, and we still get comments about it on a fairly regular basis. We had updated five cabins, the arts and crafts building, and the function hall, and all those had been completed, you know, kind of over the course of the spring and into the summer last year. We are getting ready for that next phase of improvements with the funding that you folks provided this past fall. So, next couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll be starting on the water line for the function hall, which will immediately be followed by the heating system and the sprinklers. So, we'll be able to start using the function hall on a year-round basis for additional opportunities. There's a handful of changes in my budget for this year. I, most of them, I think, are fairly small and relatively self-explanatory, although if you have questions as we go through, feel free to let me know. There was a couple that I wanted to highlight. First one is, you know, starting in the kind of part-time wages. Chris alluded to it a little bit earlier in his comments. With the opening of the function hall and the ability to start renting the facility, our original proposal was for kind of a part-time, twenty hours a week, year-round. Somebody that could kind of clean and maintain the building, so that I'm not spending my days cleaning instead of other things that I should be doing. That number was reduced, and, and we understand that we really don't know what the level is, what we're going to get for rentals. We hope it'll be a lot, but we don't know for sure. So, that's just where the discrepancy is when my request versus the town manager's request. So, we have a little bit of funding in there, you know, for that particular line item, and that's kind of the details of that. Moving down to Fourth of July, you'll see a five-thousand dollar increase for the festivities. And what we're primarily looking at is the ability to provide better fireworks. We've been kind of at the same level, price level for fireworks for a number of years now.
Could you just, do you have the number of the line item there?
It is eighty-three seventy-two.
Okay, thank you.
So, looking to get a little bit of a better show, just to kind of keep up with, you know, fireworks. Fireworks get expensive every year. So, we get a, you know, a little bit better show, and depending on how bids and things come out, you know, possibly the addition of an additional marching band or two would be the other hope with those, those additional funds this year.
If you've been using twelve thousand dollars a year for fireworks, that's been in place since the year two thousand.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, there you go. I don't know how long it had been, but that's...
I asked for twelve thousand rather than ten thousand in two thousand, because it was a bicentennial year.
Yeah.
Whatever happened. Not that... I'm off, I'm off.
It was ninety-six last time it was raised, I think.
Could have been. Yeah, the two-fiftieth.
I just, I had a question about the budget numbers, because I think Matt said something about increasing by five thousand. So, this year, fifteen, sixteen, we had thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget?
Right. Yes.
So, the department is proposing forty-five thousand, and the town manager is proposing forty.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
We were trying to increase it by ten thousand for fireworks and the parade. We had a discussion. We felt the fireworks were...
More important.
More important than the parade, because it's going to be an election year.
And five thousand could do a decent job expanding it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Dan?
Just my comment on fireworks, because I've been involved the last couple of years of buying them and, and being on the budgets with the town. It's an oddity that the inflationary thing on fireworks, not that prices, prices have gone down, there's more of them, but for some, you would think that they would have had a much bigger inflationary cost to them over the years, but they haven't. So, it's just, got one thing to be lucky on, to a certain extent.
Maybe we're benefiting from the changes in the economy in China.
Could be. Could be. Gunpowder's cheap, apparently. Could be.
What's going to happen this year?
Moving down to eighty-three seventy-four, you'll, which is recreation programs, you'll see kind of a little bit of changes. The overall line item is, is decreasing, and part of this, we're increasing the funding for kind of the individual special events, because as those events have gotten bigger, it costs more to put them on, so that we can kind of keep expanding them. What's missing is the, the bus trips, and we've, we've started doing those a different way. We've partnered up with Ty's Tours and Town, so they register through him, but we actually earn a commission off of the referrals, so that we don't have to pre-fund it, and we're not kind of limited to that four thousand dollars, which only gets us about two trips a year. So, so it was an easier way to, to save some money.
And have more trips?
And, and have more trips, yeah. I think we're doing, we've got about twelve right now ongoing. So, um, the, there is, the other thing that you will see in here, we did increase the, the budget for the bandstand concerts. When you're trying to do, you know, eight concerts a year, you know, there's only so many decent five-hundred-dollar bands, and so looking for, you know, to start increasing that quality. We were averaging about a hundred and fifty attendees each week this past summer, which was up from a hundred last year, and up from probably sixty the year before, I think. So, and then the last one, under kind of that category, is seasonal activities. We're looking at kind of two new special events for the community. One is a couple of movie, community free movie nights over here in the park. We did two last year. They were very successful. And so, looking to continue doing those as well this year. And then the other one is, we've, we had been approached this past year about re, bringing back the old cardboard box boat race that the library used to run. We've, the robotics team from the high school had approached us, and we've also heard it from other people, saying, "Oh, we want that back." Library doesn't have any interest in taking it on anymore, and said, "Go for it." So, we, we think it'd be a fun event for the end of the summer. And so, before I get into Natticoop Day Camp, which is, well, yeah, that's right. So, let's start with that. Is there any questions on any of our other...
Yes, Paul?
If you look at line eighty-three seventy-seven at Del Community Center, that line increased about seventy-three hundred dollars. That is because the Del Community Center came to us, and the front doors need to be replaced. The building hasn't been painted in over fifteen years. And they're also looking, and they're also looking at internal, the rental section of it. And they're also looking at replacing maybe some of their ceiling acoustic tiles. And they had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and to get and discuss it amongst themselves, and they asked for additional money for the town to help them offset those costs. And that's the seventy-three hundred dollar increase in that line item is for a front door, the acoustic ceiling tiles, and painting the interior of the building, and removing the wallpaper.
And the doors need to be replaced.
Due to code.
Due to code, because they open in, not out.
Right. One opens in, one opens out. They both have to open out.
So, they have to be, exactly. So, they're out of code.
Yeah.
And you're right, if they can spiff up the inside a little bit, I think their, the logical result will be maybe some more rentals as well.
They got to get rid of that nineteen-seventy wallpaper.
And the, and the ceiling, there's a lot of damage in the ceilings.
Check out that crack in the, where the beam that covers the division between where the dance floor is and the heating area in the back is. It's, I looked at that and went, hmm.
So, that's the building improvements line item, Paul? Because I was going to ask about that, and I think you just...
There's a building improvements line item, and then there's a repair and maintenance line item. So, the combination of the two of them.
Okay. Thank you.
And they also wanted to do another project, but I said, "Guys."
I think the doors are, the doors are low, like five thousand dollars.
It's, they're expensive because they're... Commercial glass doors.
Finley?
Well, could you refresh my memory, because it's old news at this point, but the telephone and internet costs went up last, this past budget, and I was, why was that? Could you remind me?
In, in this budget, the telephone cost went up for, for, and internet cost went up for two specific reasons. The, um, the way we're doing time cards now for his Parks and Rec people and his department during the summer needs internet access, so that's one. And then the other one was the way, the phone lines, we needed phone lines brought in. So, there was a cost to bringing the phone lines because of some of the fire alarms that we have with the repeaters and things, and the, the alarm systems.
Because it doubled. It went from eight hundred to sixteen hundred dollars, and so it's not just at Del Community Center right there.
Oh, this one. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it went, and again, it's all, it was in this current budget, wherein it's, it's, it's part of that. So, that, that doubled.
And here, it, it opened up because of the same thing. They're dedicated phone lines for their alarm system, and that's why it doubled. Because we, last year, we had to switch to dedicated phone lines for alarm. We used to use a dedicated line, and then the backup line was the main line. Well, there has been a change that you need two dedicated lines for an alarm system, and that was the additional cost here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions with this page? Okay, I, you wanted to continue, right?
Okay. If there's no other questions on general budget?
Is there anything on the next page? No? Infrastructure? Nothing?
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? Matt, I think you're done.
Well, this piece.
Oh, this piece. Don't leave. Day camp.
Don't let them off too quick.
Yeah.
I tried, Matt. They caught me there.
Before I start on the day camp, I want to just mention, I will be back here in a couple of weeks on the twenty-eighth, I believe, Paul, to talk about the establishment of a Recreation Revolving Fund, which we've been kind of in the works for a little while now. But that is coming at one of your future meetings, but I guess it has to be a separate meeting, regular council meeting, so. Under the day camp line item, we're looking at a couple of changes, so it looks like a big number difference from last year to this year. Starting with, we're looking at eight weeks of camp, going from eight weeks of camp up to nine weeks. You know, last year, there was three and a half weeks from the time camp ended until school started in the fall. And, you know, we had people calling us. Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that this is a self-supporting fund. So, as he increases the cost, the revenues come in to match it.
I was going to say that, but that's okay. That's right. Yeah, so, all of our programs are designed to be self-sufficient. We are looking at increasing the cost actually of camp from a hundred and ninety-five dollars up to two hundred even for residents this year. The reason, primary reason for that is, this past year, we purchased software, which will allow us for online registrations and the ability to finally take credit cards. And there isn't a cost associated with doing that, so that's what the, the increase kind of covers, those, those credit card charges and things. Secondly, under day camp, and I think it's the next page, is it the next page in their books, too?
Yes.
Okay. If you look down to the, the next page after the day camp page, you'll see four new programs, which we are proposing for this year. And certainly, while we hope that the revolving fund will get passed this year, we still want to be able to have the opportunity to expand programs, just in case it doesn't. The first one is a, what we're calling Little Explorers, but it's basically a half-day camp for preschool-aged three-to-five-year-olds. We have the space over at Wasserman to, to run additional programs. We usually get significantly more like camp counselor applications than we can hire anyway. So, it's another service to provide. But we're looking at basically, like I said, at eight-thirty to twelve P.M., you know, five days a week for a week program for eight weeks of the summer. Then, the second one is looking to expand upon the use of the theater that's at Wasserman. Would be a, two weeks of basically a drama specialty camp. You know, once, once Natticoop ends in the summer, that building doesn't really get used much the rest of the year. So, looking at, again, trying to find additional opportunities for kind of our existing facilities. The third one is looking at, we've been getting a lot of requests for teen programming specifically. Right now, we get, we get about thirty kids that are in that teenage age group at, at Natticoop every week during the course of the summer, but there are some that are kind of growing out of the traditional day camp model. So, we're looking at kind of a trial of two weeks of a, what we're calling kind of adventure, teen adventure camp. So, they'll do some kind of the traditional camp activities, but then they'll also go off-site for kind of field trips around New Hampshire and those kind of things. If it takes off like I think it's going to, the next year, we'd be looking at probably a whole summer or certainly multiple weeks of it moving forward. But I think there's going to be a lot of demand for it, because it's just not offered anywhere right now around here. And then the fourth one here is environmental kind of education, park ranger-type program. Wasserman Park is, is ideally suited for this type of learning. And, and again, kind of a trial basis for this first year. We're looking at, starting with kind of a series of workshops, bringing somebody in, either hiring a staff or bringing somebody in to do kind of family and children's programmings, potentially probably on the weekends, you know, to learn about nature and the, and the environment and those kinds of things at the park. And again, if it takes off, looking for expansion down the road for those four programs. And then, so those are kind of the, the four main new programs that are in the budget that, that make up that increase. And as Eileen mentioned earlier, these are all designed to be self-supporting programs. On the next page in your budget book, you'll look, you'll see two additional programs, which is school vacation week and after-school. If we get the, if we were able to establish the revolving fund, these are probably the next two that are kind of in the queue. They're things that we can get up and running, again, using existing facilities and kind of year-round usage of the park, um, moving forward. So, again, now we've got, you know, regular usage of the buildings and, you know, those types of things. But like I said, those are, those are not in this year's budget, but it's there just to kind of show you what, what's next in the queue going forward. And I think that is everything I have. Is there any questions?
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, thank you. Excellent. This is really exciting, the programming that you're proposing for Natticoop. Just a, just a quick question. When I look under the day camp eighty-three seventy-five...
Yep.
Where it says counselors, one-to-one aides, junior counselors...
Mm-hmm.
What are they making per hour? Doesn't seem to be listed there.
Yeah, the, our junior counselors are our sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, and they start at the state minimum wage of seven thirty-five. Our, our senior counselors, which are eighteen and older, and our one-on-one aides are, who are also eighteen and older, are starting at seven... Our, our senior counselors, which are eighteen and older, and our one-on-one aides are, who are also eighteen and older, are starting at seven sixty-five.
So I guess the follow-up question would be, based on the, like, taking focus at the, the teen camp or the Little Explorers camp. The councils are scheduled to make seven seventy-five, is that also based on eighteen years and older, and because of the special, the specific speci- special design, therefore, it's a slightly higher increase in the wage?
Yes, yes.
I'm really excited about all of this, it's good to hear, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sorry. I'm not gonna say I'm sorry, as soon as she's down.
All right, thank you. Well, a couple of comments and a question, ma'am.
Yep.
Park ranger, environmental education programs, I love that idea, and you've probably already thought of this, because I know you're in, um, close communication with the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
The Conservation Commission, I'm sure, would be a good resource and would be happy to partner with you if you haven't already spoken to him, which I suspect you might have.
Yeah.
Um, I have questions about the Little Explorers, do we have a demand? Have people been asking for a half-day preschool program for the summer?
Yes.
They have.
Yes, they have.
Um, and if we were to run that, would the preschoolers be at Wasserman Park at the same time as the older kids?
They would be, and what, what they do is, we would take one of the cabins, and the cabin would be kind of their home base. So they're not eating, they're not in the function hall, they're not down on the, they're not getting swimming, um, they're not getting lunch. Um, so they're kind of in, in, kind of a, their own area of the park.
Okay, because I, I know you already know this, but the needs of preschoolers with school-aged kids is just so dramatically different that.
Yes.
And I'm just, I'm, I, I guess maybe parents of preschoolers work half a day, I don't know, I'm just, I'm surprised by the interest in a half-day program like that. So it'll be interesting to, to see what happens, thank you.
Eileen, and then.
I just wanted to point out to you that, uh, the section of the, of the budget where we did, where Matt was proposing the school vacation week program and the after-school program, um, I did not include those in my budget. Um, I think that we are, Matt and I talked about this too. I think that, uh, we, we want to start with, you know, start with the programs that he's, he's, um, you know, proposed, but not necessarily all of them.
Tom?
Grandparents will appreciate a half-day program for three to five-year-olds.
Speaking from experience?
I have two.
Okay.
Sorry, Tom, I'm not there yet, sorry.
Just a, just a comment, I know as, as one of many cheerleaders for Wasserman Park, myself and everybody here and countless people in town. Um, we've made a, a big investment over the last few years of the park, and therefore, that's why that part-time person or a full-time maintenance person. Um, I don't want to shy away from, you can't invest the money that we have and then not take care of it, again, that's, we don't want to fall back. So having someone there, not someone from just the highway department who can go there occasionally when they have a, a punch list to do. I think it's more important than ever, if we're going to turn this into a year-round facility renting, generating machine, then it needs somebody to be there. So my comment was, it would have been nice to maybe have a full, a full-time person in the beginning, but I wanted to let, let everybody know that I think starting off with a part-time person is, allows flexibility, let it be for a year, and then next year, maybe we'll remember this conversation, and someone's coming back to us to say, we really could do, expand his hours, the work is there, the rentals are there, so I think it's a good start. But I just want to make sure that we're not ever going backwards, not thinking that when you invest in something, you also have to maintain it too, so, thank you. And again, nice job, Matt, thank you.
Excellent, all set.
Okay, so I, the part-time person is not in the budget, is that correct, or?
No.
Is it, yeah, there's, uh.
A few hours for cleaning.
Yeah. Thirty-six a year. How many? Thirty-six. Thirty-six hours. Yeah. As opposed to twenty hours a week. Right. Does that meet what you were thinking?
No, that's why I didn't know, when, when we get deeper into it, that'll be.
All right. Okay, I, I was misinterpreting your statement, it sounded like you were saying, I'm glad that part-time person's in there, and.
I'm glad that the, I'm glad that the, the item, the line item is there, and when it's, when it's our turn to, to debate later on in, in the upcoming weeks, that's when I would want to expand.
Eileen?
I just, I'd like to point out that we do have somebody during the summer.
Correct.
Um, for, uh, forty hours for, for the summer. Uh, and the, the, what we have proposed is to hire somebody to clean up after the events that occur. So we do have a maintenance, it's not like we don't have a maintenance person for the summer. Um, that could, as Dan said, that could end up being expanded at some point if the need is there. But, um, the additional, um, small amount of money is really so that when we rent the function hall, Matt doesn't have to go clean it. So.
Yeah, that's the five hundred and seventy-two dollars, maintenance cleaning services after. Anything else? Okay, now I think you're free, ma'am. Public Works.
Thanks, Matt, nice job.
So what are you asking for?
Steve, you're on, come on down.
So, uh, twenty-nine, Matt?
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Solid waste, I have is twenty-nine.
Nope, zero, zero nine.
Okay.
Zero nine.
I thought I'd be a rebel and sit on the side.
He's the boss, so.
Jim and Steve, go right ahead.
So I thought I would just give a brief, um, introduction for each division tonight, and, um, for solid waste, um, you'll note, uh, there's a couple of increases in tipping fees for, um, the solid waste and single-stream recycling.
What item is that, do you have the numbers?
That is.
Disposal, is that the eighty-three fifty-five?
Yeah, eighty-three fifty-five. Um, we're also, uh, seeking to fund the part-time solid waste attendant that was hired, uh, this past summer. So basically, um, it's a, pretty much a flat budget, and other than the increases in the tipping fees. So I think with that, if you want to ask questions, trying to keep it brief.
Finley?
I like brief, thank you. Uh, I was wondering, Jim, on the tipping fees, I know on the, on the, um, disposal for our regular trash, I guess. That's a contractual situation that was taken care of a couple of years ago. On the recyclables, is that something that fluctuates throughout the year, or how does that work?
Eileen?
Uh, we, we signed a contract for that for, um, for three or four years, and it has gone from five dollars a ton to fifteen dollars a ton. And that's why the increase has been, is, is there, because, um, the recyclables changed, they're, the marketability of various types changed. So for instance, cardboard, right, is much more valuable than, than other things. So, um, what, uh, what you have to also keep in mind is that, um, even though we're paying fifteen dollars per ton to dispose of and pick up our, and take away our, um, our recyclables. Uh, it takes, it takes, um, uh, fourteen hundred and fifty tons out of the. Disposal fee, which costs sixty-eight dollars a ton instead of fifteen, and we also have to pay to transport it. So, um.
We don't pay for transporting.
We don't pay, we don't pay for transporting our, uh, our recycling?
Mm-hmm.
And we don't pay for the canisters?
But we pay for transporting, because we have people that work for us that transport it, is that correct?
No, they actually, we have a company that comes and picks up our, our recyclables, but.
I'm not talking about recycle.
But our, our trash, ourselves, we pay for our trash.
Yes.
Okay, so we had a, a long-term, three or four-year contract with the recycling. How is that proving out compared to other communities? Are we in the ballpark with what the going rate is?
No one can even believe our rates, we have very, very good rates.
For the recyclables? I know the other we do, for sure.
We, um, you know, as a matter of fact, Waste Management came, has, comes to me every year and, and sees what they can, because they want to get into Merrimack, because the owner is, lives in Merrimack, and we have a great contract with him for many years for solid, you know, for the tipping fees. So he wants to get in and get the dispose, you know, the, um, recycling as well, and he goes, oh, fifteen dollars? He goes, I can do it for fifteen dollars, but I'm going to charge you to dispose of it. So, you know, that brings it up to twenty-five dollars, and he, he, he is amazed of this, at this contract.
The other thing, uh, Steve was able to get a letter from the Northeast Resource Recovery Association, basically showing that typically, single stream is in the thirty-five to forty-five dollar per ton. And that, that doesn't include transportation or containers, so it is, it is a very good deal.
How long is our contract good for? One more year?
Yeah. Eileen worked miracles on the, uh, solid waste, so I'm sure she could do the same in recyclables as well. Um, I, uh, I did have another quick question, bear with me. I'm gonna come back to that question.
Anyone over here? No, I'm listening, Bill?
I've got a question.
Okay, Bill, and then Tom.
Yeah. Just very quickly, how's the, uh, the part-time attendant working out? I know last year, that was the first time it was proposed, and something that you wanted to give it a whirl, you know, give it a, give it a whirl, for the lack of a better word. So I'm just curious to know how it's all working out for you from a logistical and management standpoint.
I can give you a brief, uh, introduction, let Steve, you know, fill in the details, because he certainly knows much more about that than I do, but, um. So I understand the position was filled in August, so we've had, uh, five months to take a look at, you know, the position, look at some of the metrics involved. You know, scrap metal, electronics, um, you know, what's, what's taking place, and right now, it's, it's somewhat inconclusive, there's a lot of benefits. Um, we need to take a harder look at, um, you know, recyclables, look at, you know, what our, what our metrics are going to be as far as, you know, comparing from year to year. How, you know, how is the, um, position helping the town and through the, uh, recycling? But, uh, some of the things we have seen is an uptick in scrap metal and uptick in electronics. Um, you don't want electronics obviously going into your solid waste, because, you know, loads could get rejected, which are very expensive. Um, I'd like to just turn it over to Steve and let, let him, you know, fill in the blanks.
Yeah, the, the part-time guy's doing very well, he's, uh, he floats around different areas, makes sure that everything is, uh, the swap shop, he keeps an eye on that to make sure that there's nothing in there, any fee-based items are in there that don't belong in there. I mean, we don't accept anything in that swap shop that, that has to have a fee. So he makes sure that nobody's dropping stuff off, you know, in that respect, so, um, he's doing well. And he's, he's trying to communicate with the residents to, uh, it's not easy, but, uh, he's trying.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
I'm set, thank you.
Finley?
The one thing they did mention was electronics, we charge for our electronics. So by him capturing these people, putting electronics in and not paying it, he's capturing that now, and that's why we had an uptick in our electronics. And we see it because it's fully offset by revenue, so we're seeing it on the revenue side too, because they're going to, instead of just dropping off a TV and running and not paying their fifteen dollars. Now they have to pay their fifteen dollars to drop off a TV or a computer, and that's where he's become handy with that area of it, the swap shop, the tires, the scrap metal and the electronics, as well as keeping the, and the cardboard, but as well as keeping the area clean and, and going up to cars and making sure that they do have the appropriate sticker. And approaching them, in a nice way, but approaching them to go back to Steve and the, Steve and Pat in the, the scale house to get the appropriate or pay the bill.
And I, and I think there's a long-term benefit too, and that's the education component, as people come in, you know, educating them about single stream, you know, why it saves the town money. Um, you know, they all, all the residents benefit if, if they follow the rules, you know, separate, you know, put in the single stream, separate it from the, you know, trash. So I think, you know, that, that would show a, a benefit down the road too.
We've tried to drive the point home to the residents, we have it on our website, that if they do, they actually do have the ability to adjust their tax base if they put the stuff in the right place. Fifteen dollars as opposed to sixty-eight, it's not very hard to figure out, if you just put it in the right place, you can save, save some money, so.
Finley?
Uh, I did think of what I want to say before, and one, uh, if I recall correctly, we're allowed six percent contamination of our recyclables?
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly, have we ever had a trailer rejected?
Never.
That's beautiful.
Never.
And then the other thing, I happened to go down to make my visit today, um, and I'm noticing pretty regularly, there's a lot of trash that's accumulating on, um, on March Road. And, uh, and there was, when I went in, it was not a bag, when I came out, somebody had left a bag, destroyed all over the place, which is the problem, one bag can scatter tons of stuff all over. Uh, how frequently do we, do we send people down that road, and how frequently do that we do?
Uh, we personally don't, usually the highway does the roadside pickup, but there's also an adopt-a-road.
Right.
Thing involved here, so they usually, two or three times a year, they'll do a roadside pickup. I know the spring, fall, highway comes up and does that, but, uh, the biggest thing is, is people just don't secure their loads.
No, true, and I, and that's why I just, I can.
I've chased them around too, and it's, you know, it's, you just ask them, just cover it up, or, you know, secure it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure a lot of people, if it did fall out, if they realize it, they would deal with it, I suspect.
A lot of people do stop, you know, if they realize, they see it in their mirror, they'll stop, but a lot of times, they don't. I've, just about every Saturday, when I go to drop the payroll sheets off and stuff, or going around town to get fuel, uh, I gotta stop on a road. Whether it's Jopper Road, Wyer Road, Bedford Road, I have to stop, something's in the middle of the road somewhere.
And it's your backyard too, so.
Absolutely.
I think, and that's something that, at some point, you can take care of that, I think we should really focus on that, because it has been a little messy, and, uh, I'm sure the neighbors would be quite happy.
I mean, as a resident of Jopper Road, I, I relate to what Steve's saying, I, and Pete Gagnon's my neighbor, and I will walk from my house all the way down to, to Bedford Road with a bag, and I'm picking up stuff, so. It's, it is a problem, I agree with you.
Nature of the beast, I'm sure.
Yeah, it is.
Dan, and then.
No, I, um, talking about things forming off vehicles and stuff, um, it still amazes me the number of times that adults let young kids run around in there, inside the shed, uh, and.
In the recycling building?
In the recycling building, uh, so I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want to go do anything draconian or anything, but, you know, maybe put something up about.
We do have a sign up in there on the wall, it says, uh, for parents to watch their children, you know, moving traffic. We have signs up there for pedestrians in the way.
You know, because they're, oh, I want to see the, I want to see the, the skid steer, you know, and run over and try to, try to look over the wall. And most of them can't, yeah, and so, and then they're running back and forth, and I'm just, I, I, you know, it, it just concerns me, let me put it to you that way.
Absolutely.
And maybe the sign outside the building coming in, so that gets it, as they come in the building, might be helpful.
Yeah, we could add another one out there to the others.
Dan?
Two subjects, one, it's now been the second year of the swap shop, uh, so tricky way to phrase it, is it a success? Now, I know it's a lot of work for you guys, but what do you, give us your, your report of this new thing that we're, it's, because it's still new.
It's, it's okay, it's, uh, it is a, a problem, but, you know, we, we manage. We haven't had to call the cops or anything yet up there, but, uh, people get pretty passionate about what they see and what they want, you know, so.
That's a nice way of putting it.
Yeah.
Do they fight, do people come and fight over an item? Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
Yes.
Do people fight over an item, they say?
Oh, they've, they've gotten vocal about stuff before. They're all treasures, you know.
Somebody's treasures.
Somebody's treasures, yeah.
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 Literally.
Yeah.
Well, they probably bring them to flea markets and stuff.
We do, the thing is, we do clean it out every day. Because if we left everything there that people put, you would need, we'd need the transfer station as the swap shop.
What percentage, just a guess, of the stuff that's put there, really shouldn't be put there, it should just be in the trash?
I'd say at least half of the stuff. There's some, there's some stuff in there that, we shake our heads every day and say, "Why would you put this here?"
So you get a few laughs out of it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, yes. We get plenty of exercise, too, carrying all the stuff out, so. But it, it is working, you know, it, it gives the residents a place to bring something, to make them feel good that they're, you know, not throwing it away. And somebody could use it, and there, there is some good stuff in there.
Sometimes it's a judgment call, and they, they're, they're airing on the side of not throwing it away. And so if it's there two days later, three days later, you're, you're, you take your judgment call.
Yeah, we usually give it a couple of days, and if it's there, we can't afford, because we know, we're limited space, so we can't afford to leave it.
I was there earlier in the week, and there was a woman there with a pickup truck full of toys that she had culled out of that building. And she was telling someone else who knew her, okay, little group that they got going there, I guess.
I think it's called a cabal.
It was a regime there.
Yeah, 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 cabal, whatever, association. Anyway, he was talking to her about it, and she said, "Oh, yeah, I took another similar load out yesterday." Because people were cleaning out their toys after Christmas from what the kids got this Christmas.
And there are a few, there are a few residents that are very, they volunteer, they go in, they keep the stuff orderly, straighten stuff out, because we don't have the time to spend in there. We have other things we have to do, so.
And that's what we were hoping for. We were hoping that there were people in the community that was going to, you know, give at least a twenty-five percent effort of policing it as well. So you're seeing that.
Yeah.
Great. I just got one more, my, my second call. I'm still not happy with signage. I think the signage at, at the, at the transfer station is not in your face. They're too small, they're not really effective, in my opinion. I wanted something big and bold, that when you're driving in or driving out, did you know, can, did you know you can throw away all your paper, all your plastic, all, you know, make a list of things, because as you know, as they dump them in, a lot of it's cardboard and, and, six-pack cereal boxes, bread line, there's just so much that you know. So I just put my another two cents in for another year, that signage could, should be bolder and more in your face.
I think we're going to also, we're going to try, we'll, well, you guys are going to give us the money to buy the signs.
Maybe we can appropriate some money to have Fathead.com do some Dan Dwyer images with like, some motivational message.
I would suggest just get a hold of the local Boy Scouts, because they're always looking for something to do.
What would help us is an electronic board, if we could put something up there that we could just program all the time and change it up. That would help. We could mount it on that community board just below it. Or replace the one with the tiles and have something there that we could just, you know, change out.
Eileen?
As we're doing our bridge projects, we are trying to get an electronic board with each bridge project. Right, Kyle? Trying. So if you can, you know, if you can incorporate that in there, if it's a long-term project, like Mugaw Bridge or that kind of thing, you'd need a sign for, for a long time and one that lasts. So, you know, we're trying to convince the state to allow them to put it in with a grant, which is an eighty-twenty thing, so that we would end up with more reader boards for the town, because we need them.
And one could eventually be housed there.
We need them, yeah. What's that?
Why don't we get them?
Yeah, if we can get it for eighty percent paid for, that's...
That was her point, right?
Right. And if we can't, then we'll make up a proposal to bring them to you.
How much does a board go for on average?
Depends what kind, if you want a mobile board...
If you want a mobile board, that's a different price than if you want a board that's similar to what we have at the police station. Police station sign is thirty thousand dollars.
What, how about a mobile?
A mobile board that he's talking about is about fifteen thousand dollars with electronics. How much does one of those mobile reader boards go for? Fifty to fif- fifteen to fifty, depending on the, how big you want it, what, what kind of...
How many characters on it?
How many characters, how, you know, computer programs, stuff like that, so. I mean, I hate to say it, the sign that the police department has, and putting it right at the, where Steve's office is, where the, where the scale is, to me, they got to go through there. It's, it, it would be the ideal location to put...
Well, we could have it where the other, the old sign we used to have, which fell apart, but the tile sign, that would be the place to have it, just as, because everybody's going to pass that way when they come in. So it's just like the community board on the way out, they have to go out, so, either place.
And hitting them on the way out's not always a bad idea, they'll get you next time. It puts that last thought in your head.
Right.
I kind of like the exit strategy, because you know what you did wrong. You guys are driving away, and you read it, and you go, "Wow, I did throw out a lot of..." And you name those top five, paper, plastic, cardboard, and you name it on the way out. And, and if you think about it, I bet you next, a week later, you'll be better at it. You'll, this is my opinion, but I think if you nail them on the way out, it gives you how you'll go back home with a different thought of what you're throwing away for a, a week or two later.
The exit sign does work, because last year, we put up, and I'm going to change it for this, you know, probably this week, about the stickers. And we've had more people come in, I was amazed this year, people really coming in, because they see the sign up there, and that was the only place we had the stickers up, talking about the stickers. And so that shows on the exit, they are paying attention. Well, Santa, too.
Okay, any other questions? Eileen?
Just one comment. One of the things that Paul actually needs to look into this, but it might be something that we could pay for out of the capital reserve fund for solid waste equipment. If it were always stationed there, and it is equipment, but they're very specific, so we'd need to, he needs to go read what that's, what the specific language is about that. So that may be a way to pay for it.
Excellent.
The other thing we were thinking about doing is maybe talking to Nick and doing another commercial we can put on TV. It just, we were planning on having him just come in and shoot down along the wall where people were throwing stuff, not showing anybody specific, but just throwing what's going in there, and then talk on that, and then run that on TV, so.
That's a great idea.
It's another, another idea.
I know at one point, too, on a couple of occasions, I had pushed using the kids in the schools to hook up with the science teachers or whatever. Because if you get the kids hooked, you're going to get the parents hooked.
Absolutely.
Any complaints from the Bedford neighborhoods, or any calls from the Bedford town lately? Are, are, any increased traffic that you, that you're aware of?
Nope.
Not from Lawrence Road, and, you know, the dirt road leading over to Beals Road, nothing? Okay.
Everything's been fine in that respect.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, all set. Okay, thank you very much. Now we can do Public Works, which is twenty-seven, I believe. Why, why? I don't know. I transferred, well, I, never mind, I know what I did. Public Works, there you are, Jim, go for it.
All right. This division provides oversight for the division within the department, and also engineering services. Essentially funds director's position, town engineer, and executive secretary. We're also looking to continue funding for a couple of engineering interns that work directly for Kyle. That's, that's been a great value for the town over the years. It's pretty much a straightforward budget, I think it's maybe up two percent, basically. But again, you get into the fifty-three-week pay period. And with that, just open it up.
Paul or Eileen got anything? Okay, open it up to anyone else? Bill?
Thank you. Jim, you might not be able to answer the question, I was thinking Kyle might be able to answer the question. But one of the things that we've talked about is creating and developing a boat ramp off of Griffin Street. And part of the discussion has always revolved around the engineering of the turn of Griffin Street. It's like a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn, come up and you go down and underneath. And obviously, that there's, there's a bit of a process, because the, you know, fishing game, DES, you've got permits, you've got the specific boat ramp design that's, that's involved, potential state funding, that kind of thing. But based on the research that I've done, the precursor to having that particular piece of the puzzle be put into place is there has to be a commitment from the town regarding that particular part of the road, the engineering, the design, and, and whatever construction needs to be done. I guess the, the question would be, do we have, if we were to entertain the thought of building a boat ramp down there and doing the necessary engineering work, A, has it been done? B, do we have a cost in mind to adequately reconfigure Griffin Street in such a way so that people with their, with their boats, I mean, we're not talking, you know, the thirty-foot, you know, you know, crisscross, we're talking about the, the outboard, you know, outboard motor kind of boats. Do we have any type of an idea of what the cost would entail to create the design and actually build or fix that particular road to accommodate that kind of traffic to that area?
Yeah, we do, Bill. Back in two thousand and twelve, the interns and I surveyed the area, and we came up with a draft proposal. Closer. We, we designed a draft proposal that would basically take a right-hand turn off of Griffin Street with a sharp curve, similar to what was done at Joppa Road Extension. That, that kind of design. It's still not great, but, but it would work. The proposal we designed up would be to curb off of Griffin Street on that kind of angle, and, and it'd be a fairly steep incline down to the, to get underneath the railroad bridge, because that's kind of a controlling height, and also controls the size of the boats, as you mentioned.
Right.
It's a pretty small structure to get through. In the proposal was to pave that area down to the bridge as well, because of the steep incline. Someone towing a boat back out, if it was left gravel, would probably just spin their wheels if it was rainy or whatnot. So the cost, I, I did a, Assistant Town Manager McCallie asked me to do an update of costs for that portion of the project today, and it's roughly twenty thousand is my estimate for that. In the CIP, for I think it's two or three years from now, we have Griffin Street Boat Ramp as a bigger project. As, as anyone who's been down there knows, the, the rest of the access road from the railroad bridge out to the boat launch itself, it's a very fine, powdery sand, and the ATVs really do a lot of damage out there. So it, it's a pretty, pretty rough road to get out there. We have in the CIP a total value of sixty-seven thousand to upgrade the, the whole road out there. And that would just be gravel from, from the bridge out.
So basically, once you would come under the bridge where the, where the model, the model airplane field is, you would, obviously, I'm assuming engineer-grade, and that would be gravel all the way out to the Merrimack River?
Correct. And that would, that would ultimately be a decision for, for you folks.
Right.
Gravel, if, if it's left gravel, of course, the ATVs are going to do a number on it. We'll, we'll be asked to be out there a lot maintaining it. We can't, the only piece of equipment we can fit under there is our backhoes. Our loader and our grader will not fit under there. So either we get permission from the homeowner off of Horseshoe Pond area to come through that way, or we have to use the little equipment to get out there, which is pretty inefficient. Paving, it would certainly be less annual maintenance, but of course, it costs a lot more initial capital cost.
Any concerns with our bridge to nowhere out there, as it relates to this?
Nope. You, you're talking the, the Twin Culver Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that was replaced probably twelve years ago, I think. And, and it's in fine condition.
No issues with that at all?
None.
One thing I, I just wanted to point out, back in oh-six and oh-seven, that area was completely underwater with flooding. So, I mean, Kyle could answer it better than me, but that may push you towards pavement versus, you know, rather...
Well, actually, that was my question, how will the pavement interact with the occasional flooding that does occur?
The, the kind of flooding you would see there, I think it would be okay. You're not going to see a lot of water movement like, like we had across Bedford Road, where, where it erodes the, the road. Because it's such a flat flood basin, the water just comes up and stagnates, so it's not washing the soils away. If we got a flood event, we'd probably want to post it as closed until the, the water recedes and the grounds are not saturated, so that the wheelloads don't hurt whatever we do down there.
Eileen?
I'd just like to remind you that maybe two or three years ago, we set aside fifteen thousand dollars for the Griffin Street Boat Ramp that's still sitting there waiting. And the, the idea behind it was that when we got state funding, that we would use that as some form of match. But you can do whatever you want with it, it's, we still have it, so.
There is no state funding, right? For boat ramps?
In the community that I used to work, I used to work in...
And how long ago was that? That was five years ago.
That was five years ago. We had a million-dollar boat ramp project done. Ninety percent.
Okay. But you aren't going to see them get that kind of attention for something in Merrimack.
Maybe we spent all of it, so there's none left.
No, their, their problem is, is they're, they're fund-based stuff, and two budget cycles ago, they did away with all that stuff.
And, and maybe they did, however, it's something that I would like to pursue a little bit. I would like comparable costs from the gravel to the pavement, because I think that ultimately, the pavement would be better served for us, because I do recognize the ATVs terrorize it down there. And I, I would like an understanding, and I, at some point, I'd like an understanding of maintenance, what we might be looking at annually to make sure that everything's okay down there and all. But I, I'm really interested in moving forward this. Each year, I'm trying to put it off in my mind, because I see it as a little bit of a luxury, but it is a quality-of-life thing as well, and a lot of people, I think, we would find, would use it.
Use it if it was more accessible.
And, and as we, our philosophy with Wasserman Park, as we put a little bin every year, before you know it, a little bit every year, and three years later, we're having a grand opening of the boat launch. If you do, even if you were to do a, a certain section of pavement, one year, and another section, maybe it took you three years before you did the whole thing, but in your third year, or maybe your fourth year, we would, would be done.
And I, and I think if, if, if we were to have Kyle put some thought into this, if the state has nothing, I'd be interested, it seems pretty simple to me. It appears to be concrete slabs that they just put on the ground, and, and that's what the boat trailers backed down on, and, and so it doesn't look like rocket science from my standpoint, but I'm not an engineer. So I'd be interested in that cost, if the state doesn't have anything, I'd like to have a greater idea of the total...
Kyle's pretty good with getting money from Washington, honestly, he looked there for a lot of money.
I'm telling you, there's, there's this group, and the problem is, there's a group that actually is responsible for making sure that there's a boat ramp, a public boat ramp on every certain-sized body of water in the state of New Hampshire. And that's where we got our money from. It is, the problem that I have with it is, well, we worked on it for a whole year. The fishing game director was there, I could have, I could call him and ask him, but he's gone. The public works director was working on it, and he's gone. And the, the guy that was in charge of that committee that had the money is dead, so.
So he's gone, so...
So that's where the big mystery is, I can't find out what that, you know.
So...
But there is, they, they exist, I just don't know how to find them.
And what I'm saying is that Hades might freeze over before we see any of that money, and if we're that interested in it, then we ought to pursue it ourselves.
Ultimately, I think maybe, I would like to exhaust all avenues.
I don't, I don't disagree, okay?
But I'm interested in hearing a total...
The prospects, the prospects of some sort of state funding at this point, when they're crying about, crying about... they're crying about, crying about no money for other things, and how they're having to raise hunting license and fishing license fees in order to fund the operations of the department, which are supposedly all fee-based, you know, and I'm not arguing about that piece. I'm just saying, look, we sit here, and other governing bodies of this town have sat here and talked about the same thing, and nobody just says, hey, let's pursue this. If we're that dedicated to it, then let's pursue it.
I'm asking the question because I think we have to pursue it, because I think it was Councilor Dwyer some time ago, and I don't know if this was just Dan and I talking offline, or whether he said this publicly, but it's difficult to be the town of Merrimack sitting on the Merrimack River and not have a legitimate boat launch going into a river that we represent the name to. And I take that to heart. I think it is a valid, valid point, that we are a community that's on a major river in our state, and we cannot provide an adequate boat ramp for people to access the Merrimack River.
For some reason, in the recesses of my memory, it has been looked at before, and there was a reason. It had something to do with the state. And I don't know what it was. I don't know if it was just the funding.
It was the funding. And I just want to make a suggestion to you. You do have fifteen thousand dollars. Kyle says it's gonna cost twenty to do the, you know, the road portion and get that paved. And if you want to start with something, you've pretty much got your money.
Well, why don't we get the information that Finley talked about, because nothing's gonna be able to be done till spring anyway. So that would be what's up, right?
But the question I would ask Kyle is, is there any additional engineering or design that needs to be done for the road going down to the river?
Probably not a lot.
Okay.
The portion beyond the bridge is pretty straightforward. You just need to fade out that sandy material and put in a better subbase. And then whether you pave it or not is the additional decision.
Right.
Engineering-wise, it's not that complicated.
Okay. So from an engineering perspective, there's, I don't, looking at a bottom dollar line, I don't even have to factor in additional cost for that, for that particular piece to happen. It's something...
It would be done in-house.
It would be done in-house, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? The Public Works?
Administration. We get a little...
Public Works Administration.
An ancillary question, does, can you not access that property from Wright Avenue?
You have to get permission.
You have to get permission from the property owner. I don't want to mention the individual's name, but I thought his property is contiguous with that stretch.
Correct.
Okay, so...
We have a narrow, the path, it's a narrow window that goes past the Skler property, I think, on the east, southeast, and I forget the owner's name on the north, but it's a little sliver out right before the boat ramp.
Okay.
It's the same area.
I think it is.
If you look in the CIP info sheets that we provided, there are sketches in the info sheets of the project.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it.
Okay, so let's move on to Building and Grounds.
Thanks, Scott.
Which is number seventeen, and I checked this one, didn't I? For once, I'm right?
Two seventeen.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds. This division takes care of the grounds at Town Hall, adult community center buildings, and Police Department. It comprises full-time custodian position and two part-time custodians. Some of the items, capital items that we're looking for, if you go to... It's eight-five-oh-two, the Buildings, capital account. Looking for budgeting for a grinder pump for the Police Department. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, windows. I apologize for that. We're only looking at windows for Town Hall, replacing those. And with that, I could open it up to questions.
Eileen, Paul, anything? So the ten thousand is only a stat, not the entire?
Yeah, ten thousand, we're gonna try to see how much we can get with ten thousand. The price of windows have really come down over the years, so, but we're gonna start looking at which ones are the worst ones and replacing them, because they're original to the building, like we did with the doors.
Yeah.
It's energy savings, trying to get some drafts out of the building, so we're not heating the outside, so to speak.
Okay, anyone on this side? Anyone on this side? Phil?
Just a very quick comment. It's really, you know, once we get out of the dog days of winter, and we get into spring and the summer, the, your crew does a great job with Town Hall, the flowers, the mulching. Really, it's nice. It's really beautiful what the team does to get the Town Hall looking as pretty as it is during the spring and the summer. So I just wanted to...
There's no team, it's Phil. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's really, it all goes to...
I didn't want to mention names, but yeah, Phil Machino, he does a fantastic job.
He's a little stressed in the wintertime. He's trying to, you know, take care of sidewalks and Police Department bouncing back and forth. So we do supplement him with someone from wastewater, actually comes up and does plowing as needed. But yeah, he does, he does the work of, you know, two men. He's amazing, really.
Yeah, physically fit like a child, for God's sakes.
Anyway, thank you.
Admiralty Society for Machino. Okay, any other questions? None. Okay, Highway. I believe it's eight? Try and trick me.
I tried.
So I'd like to introduce Laurie Barrett. Laurie is the Operations Manager for the Highway Division. And when did you start? August, so...
Yes.
We go right into the budget.
Yeah.
Captism by fire.
He's trying to see if he can scare you off.
She was gonna be scared off. She'd already be scared.
Some of the, I'll just kind of touch base on some of the capital items that are coming up. Bedford Road Bridge is in there. I'm sure if you have questions on that, Kyle could address those questions. Looking to replace one six-wheel dump truck, one sidewalk tractor. There's also some drainage improvements that are proposed for budgeting. And then the Sauhegan Trail, again, I'm not that familiar with it, but Kyle could answer any questions on that. With that, open it up to questions, and I'm sure Laurie is eager to impress you with her knowledge on budgets, so...
Eileen, Paul, anything?
This is one of the departments we talked about with the overtime. And what we did is, we looked at the last four years. We had two kind of light years and two heavy years. So we did an average of the four years, and we came up with the overtime numbers that would basically be blended over those four years. And there's a little bit of increase for overtime there with it, just to cover our costs.
We no longer take the five-year roll and get rid of the low, get rid of the high and average others?
We could do that if you want.
I don't know if it works the same. I mean, it's just, there's some fluky years that can be crazy.
Right, and that's why we looked at it, and it kind of worked out this way, because we really had, the last two years was really heavy, and the two years before that, it was almost nonexistent. So it kind of, it worked with the number of storms. And by rolling those four-year average, it was, it worked out. But we have done the five-year rolling, dropped this year, moved that year.
Eileen?
Just another thing that I wanted to point out. It looks like, just like the budget looks like it has increased a large amount, but this budget is one of the examples that can change from year to year that don't affect the tax rate that year, because we are proposing to spend three-point-seven million dollars out of our capital reserve funds. And last year, we only spent two-point-four million dollars. So it looks like this fund is going up a million dollars when it's not. It's, the money has already been raised. It's in a savings account. We're taking it out as revenue, and we're expending it as expenditures. So as I said, it looks like a big increase. But that's one of the reasons why I do my colorful sheets, because I like to pull the capital reserve expenditures out, so that you can see that there's an equal amount of revenue. And the reporters don't like to report that, but...
And that's the kind of information we really do need to try to clarify at the deliberative session.
Yeah.
Because when you're really looking at the budget, you really have to, we have to find a way to separate out those things that we've already saved for, but we have to be able to list it on the expenditure, because we're taking it out of the capital reserve. But we don't have to charge you twice. You've already paid for it. So it's not in your tax rate. Yes, Dan?
Every time, I think one of the ways we do it is we mention it every time we can.
But there's a way of explaining, I think we have to.
But it can't, I don't, and it can't be said enough, because eventually, people, it's an educational process, too. And sometimes people forget, and it never hurts to remind people.
Correct.
People who are paying attention to the budget process, I just don't think we can say it enough times.
Because sometimes they just look at the bottom line.
Yep, yep.
And they don't understand the nuances. Yes, Paul?
One other thing, if you look at eighty-three-sixty-one streetlights, right now, we're proposing a hundred and ten thousand dollars for streetlights. Years past, there's always been talk about streetlights and the cost of a streetlight. We are in the very infancy stage of looking at changing over our streetlights to LED. And we're trying to figure out the cost ratio, the payback periods, and things of that sort. There's gonna be a lot of press in the next couple of months, because Nashore and Manchester are doing similar projects for their streetlights. I just want the council to know, and the people in Merrimack know, that Jim, I have started this process, and we're looking into it, the infancy stage. And we're dealing, we're talking to PSNH about rebates and everything else, to see if it's an affordable payback period for us to move forward with replacing all our streetlights with LED streetlights.
Okay, any other questions? None? We're gonna let you get away with it this easy? So be it.
Just to take it out.
No, that's true. But we haven't taken anything out. It's just questions.
I do have a question, and I've probably already heard this, but I don't remember it. Bean Road, what are we, what's the total plan on Bean Road Bridge? Bean Road, yes. Thanks, Lord.
Oh, boy, she get up fast.
The Bean Road Bridge is currently under construction. It's the contractor, it's the same contractor that did the Wire Road Bridge. They turned that one around in five months, which was unbelievable. This one will take, this one's a little more complicated, so it'll take additional time. The completion date for the project is November of next year. We're hopeful it'll be open sooner than that.
Sixteen?
Correct. This year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Scott.
But that one is all funded in the current budget, is that right?
Correct.
There's nothing in here for Bean Road?
That's right.
Yeah, that was more of a question because I was asked the other day. It was a perfect opportunity right now.
I'll put in my plug. People can log on to the Public Works Facebook page or the Town website, Public Works site, for plenty of photos, updates, and we'd be happy to keep people informed.
I have coffee with a bunch of old guys every morning, and they have my questions all the time, so...
They won't appreciate you calling.
I was just gonna say, that'll be the first question.
I'm an old guy.
You notice, he's the one who said it.
And also, the same company's doing the car bridge.
Okay, yep.
So we have the same company, and it's the same timetable. So the company's doing both bridges for us.
Okay, next, Equipment Maintenance.
You're up again.
Don't, she's back. I believe it's sixteen. Am I right there?
Yep.
Yes, you are.
She's on the right track. It's just messed up those.
All right, Equipment Maintenance, another one of Laurie's divisions. Couple things to point out. We've had a vehicle maintenance decrease. We don't, there's no pool car anymore, so we decreased that budget, that line item. There is an increase in the education account for training on emergency vehicles. So that was something that you might have noticed has gone up, and potentially, open it up for questions for you.
Paul or Eileen, anything? Yes, Eileen?
One of the things that we, that Jim has been having a hard time with that relates back to Laurie's situation in this particular division, is we have, one of the mechanics from the wastewater division is, has been hired to work in the DPW, Public Works Garage. And Jim can't fill the position in wastewater because of the sophistication of the knowledge that a person has to have. It's not just working on cars. It's, you know, having a lot of information and, you know, knowledge to maintain very sophisticated equipment. So one of the things that we're thinking about doing is bringing before you the position of master mechanic. And we haven't fully looked at the numbers of that or anything. I think it's in Jim's budget as a line, but no number with it. But we would need to bring that forward to you as a, as a new position to basically upgrade the, while, not to add a position, but to upgrade a position.
And is that because the job description, is that different? Are you gonna have to reclassify it?
I would have to reclassify, yeah.
Because of the job requirement needs, the holo and skill?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
And is it a floater, where he'd work, where he was needed from highway to wastewater, or?
No.
No, we'd see it in wastewater.
Okay.
Because we have one mechanic now that wants to transfer to Laurie's Division Equipment Maintenance. But we have an open position that we haven't been able to fill. It's just been very difficult. You know, good mechanics are either working or retired at this point, right? So, you know, it's just been a struggle for us. And, you know, as we do upgrades, we get more sophisticated equipment. So, you know, you really, we just haven't kept up with the requirements. I mean, we have a great staff, don't get me wrong. The people that are there are really good, but it's...
It's a specific skillset.
Yeah, it really is. It's a different skill set now. You know, the world's really changed. So that's why we've been working with Paul and Eileen and Sharon to come up with a job description, job title. So we're just at the beginning stages, but when we get to wastewater, you'll see that position in there.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Tom?
Yeah. What's the, what's the nature of the training you're gonna provide for the emergency vehicle technician?
There's specific training for fire engines, ambulances. That the Fire Department is requiring our mechanics to take. We have two new mechanics that are replacing retirees.
Right.
So we have new mechanics that aren't educated in the Fire Department. So this would be specialty training for that.
So give an example of some of the stuff that they might have to do.
Electronics on the fire truck.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sort of like the electronics for wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
Yeah, and every place else, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, going to the days when I could fix my car with two open-ended wrenches, a screwdriver, and a pair of pliers. And the vice grips, they had to have vice grips.
Anyone on this side have questions? Nothing? Boy, you are getting easy with your initiation. Okay, last but not least, wastewater treatment fund.
Thanks, Scott.
You are relieved.
Thanks, Lord.
Welcome back, welcome to Merrimack, Laurie.
And that's number thirty-one?
So Wastewater Fund, this is one I know a little bit more about. So just like to point out, like I do every year, the, the sewer fund is, is an enterprise fund. It's funded by user fees. It's not funded by taxes. I think that's an important distinction that many people, many residents don't really know. So we're, we're self-supporting. We have a pretty aggressive capital improvement package in there. We're currently finishing up our major upgrade to the, to the treatment plant, but there's still a ways to go. There's still equipment that needs to be replaced and, and updated. And again, the other, the other highlight is, is that master mechanic that Eileen just talked to you about. So we show that as not being funded, but simply as a, as a line item, so that you're, you're aware of it. And with that, just open it up to questions.
I have a question, just procedurally. So that, at present, is zero. So the, the final budget for Wastewater is missing that, whatever that amount's going to be?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so how does that fit into the budget?
Uh, the, there's a position in there, but it's the lower range. So when we make a proposal, it'll be a certain number of four, five, or whatever thousand dollars that we would suggest to you that we put in there.
But it would affect the bottom line total number?
Yes.
And that bottom line total number is a component of the total budget. So how, what do we do about that?
When you go and do your final...
Because it's unknown.
Right. When you go, hopefully we'll be all set by the time we do our final deliberations. When we go and start our final deliberations, you would do, if you agree with the position, increase of X number to Wastewater. And we just, it's similar to what we do when we add something or take something away from any other department. It would be the same thing here.
As long as it's done before...
Before...
The vote.
Before, the last day is February 11th, is before it goes on the warrant for deliberative session. That's when it needs to be done by.
Right, which is pretty soon, actually.
Thirty, thirty-three.
It's, it's pretty soon. That's why, that's why I had the question. It's pretty soon.
Yeah, and we're working on it.
Okay. So your intention is, is to have a, an amount that you're going to be able to propose to us with a job description, updated job description, to be able to plug that number in?
Right.
Got you. Okay. Yes, Eileen?
If you look at the Wastewater Debt Service Fund, which is thirty-one eight six, thirty-one twenty-seven.
For those following along, it's in Department 27, Debt Service?
Thirty-one is the fund, twenty-seven is the debt service, okay? You can see that the debt service has increased by about $500,000. So again, it looks like the budget has, in this instance, has gone up by $500,000, but there's a matching revenue amount. And the reason for that increase is that we're starting to pay those fund, those, for those, the debt payments on the water treatment, the wastewater treatment plant and compost facility increases, upgrades.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. And again, some of them just may be my newness to this. The compensated absences, eighty-one forty-two?
We'll do it again, a minute.
Is, is that for when people retire?
There is a formula, generally accepted accounting principles, that we have to do. And basically, it's for anybody who's retirement eligible.
Okay.
We have to bring them on and accrue any of their leaves that they have available. And this is, we go through, I go through and look at age, years of service, and that's what that's for, it's for retirement.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Then under eighty-two forty-five, Sewer, City of Nashua, could someone explain to me what that is?
Um, in South Merrimack, we have Penetra Pump Station, and that services about 424 homes, I believe. And that wastewater then gets pumped to the Nashua system, because that area was very wet, so it was sewered, because all the septic systems basically failed. I think it was built back in 1982. So that's the fee that the City of Nashua charges to Merrimack for processing the wastewater that...
Okay.
That's generated.
And, and we're not processing it? They are, so?
They are, correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And can I just ask one question?
Well, let her finish, and then we'll come back.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on that.
Oh, on that particular thing? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, so as far as that's concerned, do we get the revenue from that, since we pay Nashua for, do we get the...
Well, we, we pay...
Do, do we bill the people and they pay us?
Yes, they, they are, they are being billed the, the typical sewer rate, so.
For Merrimack?
Yep, to Merrimack.
Right, which they would either pay for Merrimack to take care of it, or Nashua.
Right, that's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then eighty-three fifty-nine, Other Outside Services?
Yep.
Just looking for a definition of allocation of general fund administrative costs?
Great. There's a big formula that's been here for thirty, no. What happened is that since it's an enterprise fund, and since we spend time from general fund to allocate my department finance, does Jim's payroll, does all of his payments of AP, any legal that he might need, things of that sort that are taken out of general fund, that's to reimburse for services on an allocation purposes, back to the general fund, because they are an enterprise fund, and they do charge a fee for services.
Ah, okay.
You'll also see that in Police Outside Detail, Summer Day Camp, there's a line for that, and Media, which are all spe- either special revenue funds, self-supporting funds, or in this case, an enterprise fund. And it's to allocate the time of the Town Manager's office, the Town Manager, the Director of DPW, and the Finance Department, and because some of his bills are paid through tax collector, some of the tax collector's time, too.
You did a great job explaining that, Paul. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, now, Tom, did you have your answer, question answered?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, saying none. I think we are done. Saying none, I think we are done. Didn't know about it. Okay, so our first round.
You're welcome.
We seem to have survived, and so has the audience, I think. Okay, thank you all. Comments from the press or public?
I, I do have one thing.
Yes, Paul?
Um, assessing will not be on Monday night, the, the 11th. We moved that to the 21st. There's, were some comments, our assessor cannot make it, our contract assessor cannot make it that night, but she can make it the 21st. So we wanted to be, her to be here if there was questions from the council, so that she can answer them.
Okay, is Becky going to send out a revised?
Um, actually, the, I just sent it out. I gave it all tonight to you, the new schedule.
Just this one?
The new schedule, and we will...
Okay, but it needs to be made public.
And we will revise it for the public also.
Okay. Is there any comments from the press, which there is now a public? Any comments from the council? Saying none. Okay, just clear the work session down?
Motion to adjourn?
We have to adjourn from a work session?
I agree with you.
Okay. Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahon. Okay, is any session? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? None. Seven zero zero.